Oshlo. Lombi. Penny. Fox.
Here.
Gerstah.
Here.
Kenzinger. Allen. You have a form.
All right, uh, the agenda has been provided. Are there any additions or corrections to it? Hearing none, we need an approval. Moved and seconded that the agenda be approved as provided. Discussion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes of November twenty-third. Any additions or corrections? They were provided in the handout.
Moved to approve.
Moved and seconded that the minutes be approved as provided. Discussion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Next meeting should be January eleventh. Do I hear a motion for the blanket?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the blanket be approved for the eleventh of January. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Item number six, discussion and recommendation on the vacation of thirteen hundred block of South Kimball Street. Uh, before we get into this, I will say, as I have said before, I don't think the city should ever give up any right of way for anything. That that's my opinion. Talk to us about it, Neil, please.
Okay, what's before you, uh, actually, the drawing on page six is probably the best illustration there. Uh, just so you get your bearings straight, this, uh, the thirteen thirty is, uh, is Telstar Motors, and then the other side is, uh, the mobile, uh, the Middle Border Estates, which is actually Ponderosa, James River, that's who the James River is. Uh, organization is. So what they wish to do is from the point of approximately the thirteen hundred block. So as you can kind of see with that blue property line begins and going south to the dead end, uh, is what they want to vacate. So there's only the two property owners that are requesting this. Um, like, do you still in the blank a little bit, or apparently they're, uh, about the structure?
Um, just for information, there are currently no city utilities within that section. Um, kind of how this came about is it was identified that, um, the fence on the east property, um, was in the right of way along with, um, the sign for the, the property. Um, so kind of discussing options, um, on working through that, um, vacation came up and they were, both parties were interested in vacating and the, the city doesn't have an issue with it because it's already a dead end street. We don't ever foresee anything going through the trailer park. Um, we'll, we'll have to talk with the property owners about, you know, getting the snowplow in and through, or getting the garbage trucks in and through. Um, other than that, we have no issues.
Mr. Fire Marshal.
Yes, sir.
Would, what would that do to access to the backside of that mobile home park?
Uh, I believe our only access would be, you know, a first, um, and it would be a fence. Kind of that's really the only, if they had to turn around in there, um, it could make it difficult, obviously not possible. Um, but I, I kind of share your opinion. It is nice to have a first street. Now, how often would that be an issue? Probably never, um, but that being said, it would be ideal to be able to discuss.
Other discussion or questions? Mr. Councilmember, do you have any comments on this issue?
So where do you block it off? At Kimball Street there, or where do you?
Where the, about where that, at the, the first deck, about that's the property line.
So where do you put a gate across it, or where do you?
Well, they could. Yeah, they would own the property. Uh, half it would, half would go over to the west property, the other half would go to the east property, thirty-three feet on each side. Now, what you could do is, you know, you could recommend that there be no building on it or something of that nature, too. That's what we've done in some of them where, where you can, you get it, but you can't put any structures on it.
So this all came about because his, his fence is, um, not on his property?
Correct. That's, I believe they discovered it as they were, uh, looking over things, so. And.
Here.
Hopefully, again, you got, both of them have to.
All right, now do we hear a recommendation coming from this?
Now, I don't know why you can't just leave the fence there and just not, you know, let them use the property, but don't give it to them.
I agree.
Leave it status quo.
Leave it as is.
I'll make that as a motion.
No, I'll second it. Moved and seconded that we recommended the council that it stay as it is.
But permit them to leave the structure?
The fence?
Yeah.
The fence doesn't bother me, no.
For the time being, unless there's something else comes at it.
Yeah. Just leave it as is. If the road was ever developed, then take the fence out at that time.
Just for information, Kyle Croch, Chief Public Works Director. I understand that the parties intend to leave it there, um, as is, as a private road or a private access would, uh, which would be okay for fire department, but recommending that they leave a structure or something in the right of way, I, I think that's a bad idea.
Thank you.
Well, it's been there for so many years already.
Yeah, yeah, this is Terry Johnson, um, with engineering. The one thing that we're.
Terry, wait a second. Let's, uh, let's, we have a motion on the floor. Let's vote on the motion, and then we'll take some discussions. Does that sound like we, the thing we ought to be doing here, guys?
That discussion may impact your vote. I would say you discuss it before you vote.
I think you should, yeah.
Okay. All right.
So I think the other thing that we're, didn't really explain about is there's two issues. There's a fence issue. And then there's these huge brick pillars and a curved wall that goes in at the driveway. Uh, that is more of a concern in my eyes because it's built in the right of way. It's, uh, if someone hits that thing, um, there could be some severe damage. And that would be more of the issue in the public right of way. Anytime we do an improvement, we try to get those encroachments out of there. Anytime we're using federal funding, uh, it limits what we could do because of encroachment. Um, so that would be more of my concern about, uh, that entrance because it's huge brick pillars that go into there, and they're all built in the public right of way. Um, if part of that fence, it, the, the other thing that's going on is that fence has got a barbed wire, um, up at the top, and if that could at least be taken off or put on to, uh, his property, all, all the fences should be on his property anyway. When we're doing sidewalk projects, we have a lot of areas where the, um, the fences are in the right of way, and during that sidewalk project, we make the property owner put the fence on his property. They shouldn't be putting it on public right of way. So that's, I guess, our feeling is that those, if, uh, those encroachments should be in the public right of way. It's reserved for the public and not reserved for prop, for private use.
All right. I'm glad we didn't.
Yeah. What do you think, John, if we amended to take the fences and the structures out of there?
Put them on his, uh, his property.
On his property, leave the right of way in place?
Yeah, I'd, I'd see that vacated, just, but do it the right way.
Do it the right way to remove the structure. Remove the structure.
And, yeah, if he wants to put it back up on his, that's his choice.
But, yeah, get them out of the right of way.
All right, so the motion, as I understand it, before us, is that we recommend to the council that they keep the right of way and make sure that the property owner gets his stuff off of the right of way. Is that the way everybody else hears it? All right. We have heard the motion. We have a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both the same sign? Motion's carried.
Seven oh.
Further discussion on the motion. Hearing none, we are ready to roll to the next item. Plan approval at Clockworks.
Okay, uh, what's before you is, let me get your bearings straight. North would be on your left-hand side, just so that you kind of get the their, uh, street, uh, believe that's on Kimball, is on the, going east and west on the north part of it. Oh, yeah, there you go. So there you can kind of, I know the photograph's a little bad, but you can kind of see the black outline, uh, on the west side of property. What he's wishing to do is to construct a sixty-five by sixty-one addition. It's going to be primarily cold storage. You know, uh, approximately fifteen feet off that north property line, which is definitely within the zoning code. So that's what he's proposing, and I don't know if anybody from Clockworks is here or the contractors here. So, uh.
This is in the Tiff district, is it not?
I believe that Tiff district has been dissolved.
Oh, it has been dissolved?
Just recently, a couple of months ago, maybe.
If it hasn't been, it will be.
Yeah, it's, or it's, yeah.
Okay.
So he's adding on to that addition he did put on just not too long ago. What do you think? Just to the west of that big building.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Get that addition ready.
Yep.
So now this is going to be another addition.
Correct.
Do I hear discussion on the issues here?
Uh, just for informational purposes, I have reached out to, um, Mr. Clock and notified him that as part of the building permit, uh, we will require a, um, drainage, um, plan be provided, um, to bring it up to city code per ordinance. Um, and also there would be a sidewalk requirement on the portion that has, currently has curb and gutter. Um, and there has been conversation about, um, hard surfacing the parking lot.
Okay. This, correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't, a new storm sewer project, isn't that happening out in this neck of the woods?
Yep, it's been awarded to a contractor and will start construction this spring.
And won't it come up the street practically to where we just discussed vacation?
Yes. There are numerous blocks in this area that are going to be improved with storm sewer water and sanitary sewer.
Okay.
What portion of the property are you requiring hardscape for parking lot? What are you defining the parking lot as?
What, what we would like is for them to identify what they consider as their parking lot. Um, and they talk after the project is complete, they do have intentions to hard surface. Um, so we just work through all that with the building permit.
Everybody happy?
Moved to approve.
Just, just one other, uh, requirement for the, for the record. If, if the renovation meets seventy-five percent of the total project cost or total building cost, it'll be required to landscape as well.
Okay. And we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I would second it with some, uh, caveat that, uh, Joe's department is satisfied.
Okay, that engineer is satisfied?
Yep.
I guess I'm kind of, and now the Tiff is going back again on this one there, because wasn't that all about?
The Tiff will be arranged once we get through, I, I don't think it's been done yet, but it will be taken away because we've got grant money to do this.
Okay. All right, is that, we have a motion and a second. To make sure that, uh, the engineering department's happy with what they do. Anything else? Hearing no further discussion, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Uh, next item. A plaque of Lot eight H of Block seven, Westwood First Edition, a subdivision of the southwest quarter of Section sixteen, one oh three sixty. What's going on there?
Okay, on page eight, you would see the rendering of, uh, or the plaque, and then on page eleven, there's an aerial you can kind of see. So on the air, on the one that, I don't know if you can see it up here, but it's on your drawing where you see where it says the TWC. There's already a structure there. If anybody's driven out there, it's a blue building. So this would be right west, or right east of that building that's going up. Uh, so, and then there is a drainage easement that separated. You can kind of see it there where it says seventy at the end of that parcel number, you can kind of, oh, yeah, there you can actually see it drawn in. But you can actually see it visibly with there, so. Uh, and then as you can, if you've been out there, you've noticed that there's a driveway that goes across. It'd be a private driveway. It's forty feet on, on the whole thing, twenty on north side, twenty on the south side, and you can kind of see that it will extend, and my understanding now will eventually come all the way out to Connor. But as you can see, it's kind of falling into place there. I don't know.
Anybody here to talk to us about it?
Uh, we have had talks with the developer about providing a minimum finished floor elevation for this lot. Um, and we have not had any objections to that request, and we just asked that it's provided prior to, um, the council meeting Monday or approving it contingent on providing that elevation.
Okay, so you want us to put that in our motion, you think?
Yes.
Okay.
This, this is, this is conversation that's going to be coming, but, um, at this point in the plan, when you have the developer and the engineer working together, um, to me, it's, it's beneficial for the developer and the engineer at this time to provide that information to the builder rather than having the builder go back to the engineer, uh, for the same information.
Okay. That makes sense.
Do I hear a motion?
Moved to approve with those, those requirements.
All right, we have a motion to approve with the caveat that the engineer worked with the city to make sure that they have a proper elev, floor elevation. Discussion on the motion.
So is this what we're going to be doing now with commercial stuff, and I know we're going to have a discussion, but, uh, is this the easiest way once, uh, so you don't have to go back to the engineer?
So commercial property is going to be the, the trickiest, um, parcels that come in because you could end up with a five acre, the commercial development that you have no idea what size of building or where the building's going to go. Um, in a situation like this where you have a drainage easement, a major drainage easement, in my opinion, right beside it, to me, it makes sense to set a minimum floor elevation so as, um, water is not going to affect the structure. Um, but all of this will be handled by a case-by-case basis, and the conversation we have, uh, coming up, it's going to kind of gear more towards the residential, um, portion, because typically when we have our commercial items, you know, those plans are very detailed. Um, you have an engineer stamp with finished floor elevation for the building and such, um.
So if we didn't approve it that way, so if, if we didn't have those elevations or those, uh, so then basically he comes back with the building permit and it's basically you're saying okay for the height versus all of them. Is that correct?
Yes.
So this way here, we get to all approve their height or whatever, like that versus you only got to say if they come back in with that building.
Right. Well, to me, if they come back with the building permit and they don't have it, then I'm going to have to go to the builder and say, well, I need this minimum floor elevation, then we need to verify that it's built to that elevation.
So that'd be your choice or your decision?
If we get to the building permit process, yes.
All right, does that clear it up a little bit?
Okay, just so that I understand, you said it either prior to council or what would you say after that?
I'm, I'm asking for a, a minimum finished floor elevation, um, prior to plating. So whether that's contingent on, um, if we, I'm, I'm, I've heard that it's able to be supplied by the council meeting. Um, but if not, it would just need to be contingent prior to approving the plot.
All right. Further discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Next item, a plaque of Lots eight, B, C, D, F, Block seven, Westwood First Edition, a subdivision of southwest quarter of Section sixteen, T one oh three sixty. Okay, what's going on with these?
Well, kind of the same thing that you're running into again. Uh, now, some of this is on the north side, maybe we'll pull that aerial, there you go. Okay, there you go. So some of this is, uh, is, is plating off the buildings that are already there, and then some of it is ones to the south, the large parcel to the south, uh, of that. And so again, uh, where you see the TWC up there, there is a separate building already under construction, or perhaps it might even be completed. Uh, so that's what the, the different ones are. So as you could see, there's, there's two, three-unit buildings. There are A, B, and C on one building on the west side, A, uh, B, C, and, or D, E, and F on the other side, and then the other ones will be towards the south. So E is already platted and A is already platted, so that's hence why you see the gap in the lettering. And G is already platted. G is the building that, the blue building that I was just talking about. So again, now you're there, you can actually see the forty-foot driveway there, and then the hashtags that are towards the bottom that you see, that's part of also a drainage, uh, reserved for drainage. As you can kind of see, it's also identified on the plaque. Kind of the same story, different verse.
Just a different verse.
Yep.
Of the same song. Similar motion? Would you like?
Um, with this parcel, we've been working with the developer and owner, um, through the building permit process because the permit for that building has already been approved. This is more so just a transfer, so we don't have any, um, elevation data tied to this plat.
Okay. So basically, we're approving, uh, one, two, three, four, five different lots here.
Correct.
So I hear a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the plat be of the ensuing lots be approved. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both the same sign, motion carries. Number ten. Lots nine and eleven, or nine through eleven, are we talking here, Neil?
Correct.
In track J Wildwood Oak Golf Club Edition to the City of Mitchell-Davisson County, South Dakota. Take a look at those.
Okay, the plat, a copy of the plat is on page sixteen. You can kind of see where the three, uh, lots are drawn out with the respective easements drawn on there, so. Uh, and then there's an aerial that's on page, uh, nineteen of your packet. You can kind of see, and as well up there, so that you can kind of get a idea of where this property is located. Um, as you see that, I believe that's a duplex where it says three oh one and three oh three Homer Court, so you kind of, as you come into the development of Quiet Lane, go south there, it's a cul-de-sac, so that's where that's at. It appears to follow the master plan and so forth, and and I see representatives of them are here, if you've got questions of.
Anybody want to talk to us about it? Looks pretty routine. Looks like everybody's following the proposed plat. Second. Moved and seconded that the plaques be approved as presented. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both the same sign? Motion carries. Uh, if elevation requirements for plaques and building permits are engineer's office information only. Talk to us in light.
Well, I'll get them, get them started just so that you got, you can see what's included in your packet. Uh, on page twenty is a letter by, um, city engineer that went out to various party, parts, primarily the surveyors, builders, uh, and probably some other ones, developers and so forth, and, uh, engineering firms. And then on page twenty-one, we did a little mini poll of some of the larger cities, and just to kind of ask them how they handle the issue that we've just been talking about. And this, again, is primarily for residential is what we asked about. Um, again, commercials kind of in a, a world of their own a little bit, so. The ones that did take the time to respond, I just kind of summarized what they said there, just to, because some of the stuff was kind of redundant, so I just kind of summarized it. One, we did not get a chance to hear back, was from Aberdeen. Um, so, but anyway, it just at least gives you a little bit of a summary there. With that, I'll yield to the engineer's office. And then, I mean, there may be other people want to talk about it.
Okay.
Uh, so currently our city code requires, um, trans, finance, security, finance, et cetera, for improvement, uh, development. There are some developments that were, uh, approved prior to this ordinance. So currently, um, the plaque comes through, um, we would like to bring it up to our, our ordinance.
Thank you, Terry. Um, we'd like to bring it up to, um, our ordinance standards as far as elevation data and, and those, those types of things. Um, in the letter, I described, uh, the elevation data, uh, we're looking for, um, basically just to ensure that drainage doesn't adversely affect the property. Um, the reason that we're requesting it at the plotting process is, like I said earlier, it's to have the developer and the engineer have that conversation to have it drain as intended. Um, because in my opinion, if we do get to the building permit process, the, and the builder or the owner has to go to the engineering company that did the plan and ask for it anyway, and they end up paying for it anyway. Um, and like we do have, there's been recent developments, I think Terry and I checked this morning, as far back as oh-two, and there could be previous that actually have all this information that we're asking for. Um, and if it's not, we've heard, we heard, um, maybe it can't be provided directly on the plat. Um, and maybe it'd be better as surveyor's affidavit that's attached to the plat. Um, we have gotten verification from the courthouse that they would allow us to put this information on the plat, but if a surveyor or engineer fears more, feels more comfortable to provide it as a surveyor's affidavit type that can be attached with the plat, um, then those elevations will follow that plat for the life of that property until it's either changed, um, but even sales, you know, moving on, it could be, that information can be with it a hundred, two hundred years from now. Um, and I guess the, the, the other cities that we talked to, um, four of them have, require some sort of information as part of the plating process. All of them require the drainage plans, utility plans, um, prior to approving the development. Um, the, the communities require certain things at different times, like Sioux Falls requires the developments to be graded out a hundred percent before they even accept the development, so the drainage is already in place. Um, and that's not necessarily the case here in Mitchell. Um, and now everyone through this process almost requires a, a drainage plan um, at the building permit process, which to me seems a little redundant. If you already have the information, why not just transpose it um, at that time? So you don't have possibly conflicting elevations from the engineers and the developers' standpoint to what the builder wants to do. Um, in my opinion, providing it upfront is, is less confusion, um, and easier to get the, the ultimate goal of what the project was intended to be. Um, and I guess with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I, I would like to make a comment here, and I think Skip, you'll agree with me. We've kind of been pushing for this for quite a while to make sure that it happens because we've seen too many places where it wasn't fully thought out. And I, I, I think this is a excellent idea. I think one other thing that needs to be looked at is, and maybe you're taking this into consideration. So, you have this area that is going to be developed here, what's upstream from it and what's downstream from it. And I think that's important as well. Anybody else got a comment or a question?
You're looking at, uh, any new developments, correct?
Correct. So, the, the, the develop, any proposed developments, all this information is required upfront, um, in the planning process. And what we would like to see is that information from the planning process be transposed in the plating process, so that way it will always follow that piece of property.
There's too many houses built where my backyard drains into your backyard instead of where it's supposed to go.
That's, that's kind of where this stemmed from. We receive, uh, multiple phone calls a year about drainage issues in town and backyard problems, and, um, we can come out and look at it and provide a suggestion if there's an, uh, an easy fix to it, but a lot of the times, we have to just tell them there, there's nothing we can do, this is a civil matter. So, it's, it's kind of pre, trying to prevent those things and just end up with the, the best final product and the final product that was intended.
Guess the only question I would have is if you're plating a large property with a large change in elevation, and you don't know where the house is going to be, how do you set an elevation? Until the owners actually purchased the property and designed a house and placed it there, how do you know where that's going to go?
So, larger properties, I could see that being an issue, um, but you're, even from one acre lots, you can set a min and max elevation, um, because the engineer's going to know, um, you know, a minimum floor or gar, I call it a garage elevation, the minimum floor elevation, not necessarily the basement elevation, unless that, um, lot is approved to be a walkout. And then, to me, you should also have the walkout elevation, so know, um, adjoining drainages affect that piece of property. Even on some of the communities that we reached out to, they said they had that issue where if there wasn't a walkout intended, the bill, or the builder homeowner puts one in anyway, and now they have drainages that are flooding into their basement, and they come back to the city and ask, what do we do? So, I think the engineer can set those minimum elevations so as drainage doesn't affect them and still be able to, um, build what was intended for that lot. Because sometimes a homeowner will want something that can't be achieved for that lot, and if we have this, then they should know that upfront.
I know I, I live over on East Fourth, and I wish that would have been in at the time. We, our, our area on Fourth and Third is pretty much surface drain, but it's so doggone flat up there that if you get a pile of leaves in the gutter, you have gutter lake almost immediately, and it goes clear across the street. And thank heavens, heavens, guys come around and sweep the, the gutters out quite often this time of the year. Otherwise, you know, two years ago, when we had all that rain, and you didn't get those gutters swept out that fall, fall of, and winter of twenty nineteen and early twenty twenty. I'm telling you, we had streets that were under ice for several blocks at a time. And I know, Joe, you were up and looked at our corner one day, uh, where it goes off into Marshall. And it's a mess, but you can't do anything about it.
Right.
And something like this would have prevented that from happening, in my opinion.
I, I should also clarify, we, we are planning on doing this for existing current developments as well. So, for instance, if a piece of property, if a plat comes from, say, the island, we would require this information for that individual plat.
I, I see this nothing but doing good things for us in the future, myself. Anything else that we need to talk about here, guys?
Uh, so, let's say I'm going to go up to the island, and I'm expected to be in the entire, uh, 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 so long that it's not really possible to, uh, uh, that's really after that, all the, uh, 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 uh.
Correct.
So.
Checkbook out.
Yeah.
So. I would go with the building permit, too.
Correct. So, there'll be some instances where.
So, he wants to buy the two lots.
Yep.
He can buy the two lots, but if he wants to ever build on it, he'll have to get this, must be elevation.
Correct.
If you're going to.
But not at the time he buys the lot.
So, we, we want this information to be on, on, to follow the plat. So, if, let's say right now, you own that piece of property, and you're going to come and build a house, we'd require it as part of the building permit. But now, if there's going to be a sale of the, of the lot per the plat, we would require it at that time. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So.
The, the subdivision is designed to be a subdivision. It's not designed to be an airport or a commercial building. So, the, the reason we want that on the plat is that it's going to transfer from owner to owner, and owner, the new owner is going to be, is going to know what he's responsible for as far as building a lot or building a home there. I understand that it's upfront cost, but those costs are also passed on to the next person that buys the lot. So, uh, we don't see this as a hindrance. The problem is, it's getting lost. Someone buys a lot, they put up a house wherever they want, and then we see at the end of the development, or fifteen percent into the development, now you got homes all over the place, and drainage isn't being, drainage isn't being accomplished the way it was designed by the engineer. That's what we're trying to prevent.
Well, and, and I think it, I think you're right, but it's also got to be looked at for the whole area, not just that individual lot. And, and you need to know. Well, and I, and I think we're, I think what Joe and Kyle are talking about here is we're, we're trying to make people have a heads up and go in those things saying, wait a minute, I better look at this before I do a lot of things. I, I think that's where you're going with this, even in, in subdivisions where there's stuff already there.
My name's Doug Backlund. Uh, I just have a couple of questions, and I met with Kyle and Joe the other day. Um, where, you know, you got half the development already com, completed like at Wild Oak there. You got some houses that have already built up with, you know, steep inclines for the driveways. Well, putting this elevation requirement in on a lot next to it, I mean, you might have a guy that's way up here already because he's built his house up, and this guy's going to be required to build in here.
Yep.
And we're still going to have a drainage issue.
Yep.
And, and I know there's an issue throughout town. I mean, we, we've had constructive conversations about this. I just want you to know that when the development's half done, and you kind of change the rules in, in the process, it's almost like spot zoning to us. That's, that's my thoughts on it, so appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So, so a couple of advantages, again, uh, changing from owner to owner, there's, it's going to go along with the plant, that information goes along with the plat. And so, the problems that we've seen too with development is the builder never does go back to the developer or to the engineer to verify. And so, you do have homes that are at, set at elevations at different heights, and, you know, the developer has to deal with a problem that really, they didn't, they bought, they, they bought a service from the engineer to, to design, and the builder may go out there and do whatever he wants. And so, that information, I, we both feel that, that information being passed along in the plat kind of secures it, so the builder has that information as well, the developer has it, and then they can verify with the engineer. Everybody's communicating. The problem is, there's no communication passing on from one to the other.
Well, and for new stuff, that's not going to be a problem, and I, and I see where he's coming from. For stuff that's already out there, it's going to be a pain. But there's not a lot you can do about it if you want to, if you don't want to have a lot of issues down the road.
And I, I agree with you. You've got to remember, with these new requirements coming in, it might affect the saleability of that property.
Yep.
Just a thought to consider, guys.
And, and we sympathize with you, but you're better off having that happen now than five years from now when neighbor A comes and sues neighbor B because neighbor A is draining on to neighbor B, and nobody looked at it when the sale was happening and things like that. I'm sorry, I, I, I see where you guys are coming from, and I see where you're coming from, but it's going to have to happen.
Yeah, it's definitely a complex problem. I mean, there, there's, there needs to be more communication, but what we've seen is too, you know, every development, every city that has development has this issue, uh, they, they've worked through these problems, there's different ways of working through the problem. Um, but what we see is a, a trend sort of going this way, where, hey, get it up in development first, get it on the plat so it's recorded, and then you don't have to deal with it at the building.
Yep. So. Yep. I see where you're coming from. All right. One other thing, and then we need to go.
One more comment. My name is Jared Klosman with Wild Oak. I've, uh, kind of started help create, uh, that project out there. Uh, in two thousand four, I think we did the engineering on that project, straight curves, water sewer, whatever else. Two thousand seven, I think we came to the city to ask for it to be annexed in. With that plan we submitted to you at that time, the tracks, we, instead of doing it in plots, we did it in tracks out there. On the tracks, it showed the topographic, water drainage, showed all the elevations, blah, 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 blah. Over the time, we've sold probably forty, fifty percent of these lots out there, we've allowed people to kind of keep their own, uh, standards, uh, work with their builder. Uh, we've got some that we probably don't agree with either. Uh, we've had some controversy out there, we've settled it internally out there with the people to solve the problem. But the topographic, the drainage situation was all put in place, and it was done in tracks. Well, the way I understand it, now we're being asked, when we put these tracks into plots, that we have to go back and have civil engineering, professional engineering done to create the grade levels to show that floor elevation, which may not get built for three to five years longer than that, you know? Uh, again, I think we're putting restrictions on some people in the middle, uh, you got two houses over here, you got two houses here, now you got a middle lot. You know, that, that, these already exist. They were grandfathered in. All this stuff was grandfathered in, because I believe the ordinance came into place in two thousand twelve. But we submitted this information to the city in two thousand seven for approval. I believe it was approved at that time. So, I guess I'm a little bit with Doug there, where we think we're getting a little bit of a spot zoning effect happening, uh, to us out there in the middle of our development, so. Any more questions we want to answer? Thank you.
Thank you, and we understand that, but I still think we're barking up the right tree here, but. Yep. And if we, if we had, had the foresight to do this before you guys got started with what you did, life would be better for you right now, and I guess I'm sorry that we didn't. But we on this planning commission have been aggravating on this issue for quite a while, and, and I can say that because I'm the, I'm the historian here. But we have, we have kicked this around a lot, and we think we're going in the right direction here.
I mean, there is nothing worse when you get a call from somebody and says, they, I got a drainage issue, my neighbor's draining onto my lot, or I'm getting street drainage or side yard drainage that's going into my basement through my walkout. You go out there and you say, I can't do anything about, uh, what's happening between your property and the next property, it's a civil matter, and then they say, well, what does that matter? What, what does that mean to me? Does that mean you need to talk to your neighbor and try to work it out, try to come up with a solution? Well, that's not a fun solution as a city employee to try to talk to people about. We try to make solutions and try to come up with ideas of how to make something work. Sometimes you can't make it work, and then if it means that, uh, you can't work out something with your neighbor, because we run into a lot of cases like that, then we say the next step is hire, hire your own attorney to try to talk through it. Well, that's not a fun thing to do either. We've talked about drainage for years. We've talked about grading, how to provide. I think we're getting to a point, we've run into enough issues to where, uh, we're trying to provide a better system, a better roadmap moving forward. Now, I agree, some of these existing developments didn't have any of that grading established, and some we have the grading established. Those that don't and built their houses too high or too low, they'll have to take a look at those lots that are still left in the middle, where you have houses surrounded, take a, take a look at those elevations and work through this new lot. Um, we've had hours and hours of discussion through this the last couple of weeks, and gone through different scenarios and things like that. Talked to cities all around the state, and they all say, this is a tough issue to deal with, but it's a necessary issue. And, um, I just think it's going to be moving forward, um, you know, even though, and I made this comment, you don't, uh, you don't know the size of your house when you buy your lot, you might not build for five years. Why, why do I need to have that on there? But it at least gives you a general idea of what that minimum, uh, or maximum floor elevation is of my garage. And then, some spot elevations are where your property is going to terminate at the end of your property where your neighbors can match to. At the time you end up doing your building, you incorporate that elevation, uh, and, um, if you got a walkout, if you don't, depend on what the size of my building is, and that's where the detailed grading plan will get involved in at the building permit process.
I just wanted to say too, the, you know, the developer we're talking with, there's, there, it's a great, it's a great development out there, and we have not seen issues with that particular development, but again, we're at the stage where we're at about fifty percent, we could start seeing it like we've seen in the other subdivisions. And what we want to do is protect the whole neighborhood, you know, there, does there get to be a point where there's a lot that's just not buildable? Or if it is, you know, it's built so much lower, and now they always experience flooding, you know, what's, is, is that ever good for the, for the homeowner or for the city to have that in the middle of a neighborhood? So, we're trying to, we're trying to look at the whole, uh, big picture.
I want to know about that, so, when you go to a travel, can you, like, are you going off like track that is third, or is it track four?
Yep.
So, the engineer will set that, uh, min-max based off of acceptable driveway, um, grades. So, as, so your, your regular car's bumper's not dragging for your max and your lows, so that, you know, there's, through their drainage plan, there's possibly X amount of storage within the street type thing.
I do have a question. And, you know, in the architectural world, we have this thing called a standard of care. It establishes the baseline of what we need to provide our clients and what we're liable for. And we're allowed to go over that, provide extra value to our clients, but anything we provide, we are responsible for, and we become liable for. By setting elevations, is the city taking on additional liability? What happens if we set an elevation, they built to it, I mean, it's still flooded. Is the city on the hook for that?
The consulting engineer sets those elevations.
But you're approving it through the building permit process, correct?
Correct.
Who takes the liability for that?
Whoever, of course, decide.
And Justin's not here to.
Yeah, and I wish he was, unfortunately. That's, I mean, I, I think that's a big overarching question, is how much liability is the city taking on by doing this?
Good question, but it's.
I, I'd agree, it needs to be done. We need to set some standards, but I, I.
Yeah, but right now, there isn't.
Yeah.
And... I know, yeah, exactly. And I guess, we want you guys to know, I mean, we totally understand. This is trying to alleviate problems, you know? And, because there is drainage issues, and we don't want the city to have issues down the road, I agree with that. My question is just what you brought up, sir, is, you know, after the development is halfway completed, now we're putting in elevations, and I should say that house, for instance, does flood now, who's going to accept that liability? That's my question.
Yep.
And I totally agree with you, because, like I said, one house on the lot next to it's two foot up or three foot up. And now this next lot, we're requiring it in this happy medium range, and it still floods. So... At the beginning of the development, when you're looking at the whole map, I agree, totally agree. We're not opposed to that at all, I totally agree with that.
And it's funny, because we issue building permits anyway. So are we liable?
Yeah.
You know, that's a great question, but we are issuing the building permit. And so...
I guess, I guess...
I guess the answer that Terry is saying, when we go back to the neighborhood and say, well, you know, you all deal with it as a civil matter, we're out of it. You know, are we out of it, or are we liable? I guess...
Right. Well, yeah, that's the question, is what level of liability? Because obviously, you're at some baseline level. Now, we've just now provided additional information that we're now responsible for, so we've actually raised the liability a little bit.
And again, I think that, you know, when we talk standard of care, you know, what is the standard of care throughout the rest of the cities in South Dakota? And are they requiring it as well? Whether it's either on the building permit or in the plat section. But they are, and we're all dealing with it.
And I guess the other thing is, should we be looking at what Sioux Falls makes their developers do? Come on in and put all the streets in? You know, I think Harrisburg does the same thing. Put her all in before you ever start building one, and make sure the elevations drain to the street.
And so in an ideal world, that would be great. I think that puts a lot of burden on the developer as far as cost. And if they were going to build out in two, three years, you know, no big deal. But if a development takes twenty years to build out, it's a great, it's a great comment, but, you know, how do we deal with it here in Mitchell?
Well, thank you, guys. Unless you've got any more, let's move on.
My response to Kevin would be is, alls we're doing is we're making sure, because this information is required anyway per ordinance. Alls we're doing is making sure that the information is handed down, and everyone knows the information upfront, rather than it just getting lost in translation. The biggest thing that's not shown on the other community's comments is they struggle with this all the time, and the answer is, we don't have the right answer. And the way I see it is, I see four communities that are starting to implement this in the plating process. So if that's, to me, that's the trend that people are moving to, and I don't see this as a bad thing.
Well, and I think, I think 2019, what we saw in 2019, I probably won't ever live long enough to see that again. But it doesn't mean that it can't happen. And I think that's part of the reason we're looking at this really hard, is because we have seen so many problems in 2019. And I think you guys need to be commended for what you're trying to do there. That's my two cents worth. Is there any other business to come forward this body at this time? Well, I kind of think, and I kind of think I heard, that's what I heard Joe say, and that we want to work with these guys down the road here, too, in the middle of things, so... All right. Anything else to come forward this body at this time? If not, time for public input. If you had a need to address the City Planning Commission on an item that was not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes, and I have my little three-minute clock telephone timer along. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time. Seeing no one come forward, we are adjourned until January eleventh. Yep.
I hope everything works.
Well, all you do is pray. We don't write the script.